North Smithfield School Committee Meeting weekend means at seven o'clock. We're gonna have a motion to weekend meeting.
I'll make a motion weekend meeting. Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Close? Some move?
Seven o'clock.
We didn't go into executive session, so...
That's...
There's no motions necessary for minutes. We have a presentation by Mr. Parmally. We also have the issue of Daco bus transportation. While Mr. Scungeo is here, we entertain a motion to move the Daco bus contract issue before Mr. Parmally's presentation.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Is there a second? Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Close? Some move? Mike?
Item number 10, I'm assuming we're on Daco bus contract issues, not the potential litigation.
Yeah, not that.
Okay, all right, yeah. We just got the packet from superintendent on Friday and haven't had time to digest all the information, so I'm hoping that we can put this on the agenda again for the 15th. But as of right now, I just wanted to, and I know we're not supposed to, you know, it's better if we don't pass out information at the meeting, but this information that I have, that I would like to share with everybody, was I needed to have the Daco information that was in the packet Friday to prepare these documents. So, I don't expect anybody to react to it tonight, but I'd like to pass them out tonight so everybody can see them and then be prepared for them, to discuss them on the 15th. It's basically, the first two pages are a listing of the 29 communities. I did fill out an APRA request with 29 communities to ask them to provide their contract, their bus contract, the RFP, and the invoice for the month of October 2015. And this is a, this table represents the results of that survey of the 29 districts There is no district that, this one, out of the 29 districts that responded, 28 have no mention of depot-to-depo route time. The one district-
Okay, point of order. This was just passed out. I thought we weren't gonna discuss this tonight, now we're discussing it. Madam Chair, point of order. Wasn't given up ahead of time, shouldn't be discussed. Make a move.
Okay, then can I just, rather than discuss it in detail, can I just explain what each page is? And then you can review and read it.
You compiled this yourself?
Yes.
Okay, so you're, has this been reviewed by anybody else?
No. I was asked at the, I believe it was the January meeting, if I would share my results with the superintendent and the business manager, the transportation director, and I asked them to compile their results as well, and then I would provide them with mine. So I'm providing them with what I found today. I'll be happy to give anybody who wants a copy of the contracts, the contracts, and all the RFPs and everything else, because everything was done electronically by email. So if somebody would like to review them, I'll be happy to provide all the backup to support the table.
Madam Chair, read a point ahead. Point ahead to...
A couple of things. One is, I don't think we need to review the contracts. It's not relevant to what our contract says. And in regards to this matter, who put this on the agenda that we're not prepared to discuss if we go over it? I mean, why is it on the agenda? It was kind of a surprise to me-
Me too.
-that it was on the agenda. We came here to listen to Mr. Parmally, we were, that's what the presentation was, and then I see Daco on here. I was a little surprised about it, but now we're not prepared to discuss it?
Well, I am, but you don't want to this evening.
Well, you just handed it out. How are we gonna discuss? That's against, that's against our rules. We're prepared to discuss it in our packet.
I think all Mike's doing is explaining to you the purpose for the document and asking you to review it between now and the March 15th meeting.
But why, but who put it on the agenda? I mean, I was prepared to discuss this document that was passed out to us.
I asked to have it put on the agenda.
Okay, so...
Because, and when I asked to have it placed on the agenda on Wednesday, we didn't have that document yet, but we had been told we have a reply from Daco by a certain date, which had come and gone. So my question and reason for putting it on the agenda was, what is the status? Because we were supposed to have information provided to us by Daco by a certain date, and it didn't happen.
Excuse me, Madam Chair. My memo was very, I'm sorry, my memo was very clear that I would get that, do that information no later than Friday. I would try to get it to you sooner. Lisa and Alicia did a nice job of fiscal impact. It got to you on Friday, so I don't know what Mr. Clifford's talking about. We got that according to what the memo said. So, Mr. Mayo and Mrs. Peppler did some wonderful work, and so did Alicia and Melissa. So, it got to you by the date that, no later than Friday.
Well, that wasn't the first deadline date, though, Steve.
No, it wasn't.
This has been kicked back several times.
No, it really didn't, Mike. Not at all.
Well, the original date from that, that Daco had promised to respond to Mr. Mayo by was the 15th.
The 15th of February.
The 15th of February.
You're correct.
That was the date that I think we had all, last time we met, had been going on.
So, but Mr. Bassett, my memo was pretty clear. That was feedback to Mr. Mayo, and he received that on the 12th of February. They reviewed it over the weekend, they met on Monday to review it. So it wasn't just Daco responding. My memo was pretty clear, in my email, that from Daco it would go to Bob Mayo, and it did. So Daco provided it before the 15th. Bob reviewed it over the weekend, responded to Mrs. Peppler. They met on Monday, just as I said it would happen. And so, from that result, they did some more tweaking, and you got the results, so... And I would love to have a hard copy of what you collected, and Mr. Mayo had also asked, did you also get their cost per route from the 29 other districts by any chance?
Yeah, it's in the documents, if you want to piece it out.
Do you have a spreadsheet on it, or...
No, it's in all the documents, because as I explained with Mr. Mayo, asked that, it's not quite as simple as he would like to think, that you just pull out the number of what the per, the cost of the buses per day, because some of them bid with gas included, some of them bid with monitors included, some of them have 36 free field trips a year, you know, specified months. So it's apples to oranges. You can't compare apples to apples so simply. I don't have the 48 hours necessary to actually try to extrapolate that information from the documents, but he'd like to, I'll give him all the documents.
I think that's a great point. I think that's what Mr. Leviter was trying to make.
I think the, and as far as this not being pertinent, the argument was made publicly that the definition of school day was in our contract, and that seemed to somehow or other be translated into the route time length. And I just wanted to point out that on these contracts, there are three other district contracts that have that same definition in their contract, and they're not paying extra hour route time. So I think it was intended in the other districts, as well as ours, to be a definition of when the depot would be open, not that that was the definition of a school day for route purposes. It had to do with when the depot would be in operation. So the second, the third and fourth page, I used the new adjusted numbers from Daco of what each route's time was, and the number of hours for each route. And what happens is, they took out 20 minutes for the pre and post-bus inspection time, and so I took the original December route time, then minus out the 20 to show the difference, and that gave us the, and then I went to column for the new route times. And as you can see, if we look at number two, bus route number two, it was four hours and 57 minutes in December. Take out the 20 minutes for the pre-post, it brings it down to 437, but yet they're saying the new route time depot-to-depo is five hours and one minute. So they actually increased that route by four minutes from December to now. And the net change in all of the routes is five hours and 36 minutes, the routes have been reduced by per day, which is about half of what we were paying, because it was 11, now we're paying five and a half. However, if you take out the pre- and post-bus inspection, the actual changes to the routes themselves were only 56 minutes. Because some of the routes, three of the routes, they extended the length of the route, and the other routes they decreased, but they, the net effect was a 56-minute change in the actual route times.
I don't follow your bus too, because the information you received from us, just saying it came in at 5:01, and that was the last one. That's 2:23. I follow you. So you use the latest data?
I used the latest numbers they gave us. That Daco February total are the new route times that they gave us for the end, for the, you know, the total route time for the bus.
I can't follow this too well, but I'll, but I'll try at another time when we have a review.
Yeah, right. Yep, and the other page following it is if you took out 15 minutes for route time, because initially they had told us the pre- and post-bus inspection time was 15 minutes, but then we were told, no, it's 20 minutes. So, the difference on the next page shows the net increase or decrease. The last two pages-
Madam Chair, Madam Chair, excuse me. If we're gonna not follow procedure, allow this to be discussed, I'd like to know why the public isn't gonna be allowed to speak.
There's just no opportunity for the public to speak.
Why is there no opportunity for the public to speak?
There isn't always at special meetings, but there is at the regular meetings. So on March 15th, it will be that opportunity.
Well, my understanding is, is that it's at the discretion of the entire school committee whether or not people are allowed to speak. A special meeting doesn't just mean that the public is not allowed to speak.
Well, he's, he's just explaining-
Well, I think he's going on long enough. I think Mr. Lombardi and Mr. Pommel-
Well, I think this is explaining the document, and we're going to discuss it again on March 15th, so if you'd like to come to that meeting, you're welcome.
Were pretty clear about this not being on the agenda, and that we're not following the rules of the school committee. And that hasn't been addressed yet.
Thank you. You can be seated.
Did I misunderstand you, Mr. Lombardi? Please? Did I misunderstand what your intent was, as far as this not being on the agenda, but yet we're gonna discuss it anyway?
No, it's on, it was-
Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair, I don't, I don't have a problem with, I mean, this, this one again, put on the agenda, that's kind of a surprise if the public wants to speak. I don't have a problem listening to them. It has to do with what we may be voting on tonight, what we may not be voting on tonight.
Well, I've already said that I just wanted to give the information tonight, put it on the agenda for March 15th, then we can have a thorough discussion.
I'm prepared to make a motion, so that, I may make a motion a contrary to what you are, what you thought may happen. So, I want, I'd like to hear from the public, if that's something that the committee would do.
I'd like to hear from the public.
Well, you can make a motion to-
I make a motion that we allow the public to comment on item before us.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Could you do a roll call vote, Mike?
Yep. Mr. Lombardi?
Yes.
Mr. Raymond?
Yes.
Mr. Pommel?
Yes.
Mrs. Nato?
No.
Mr. Bassett?
No.
Mr. Clifford?
No.
Motion dies. We'll continue with the meeting.
The last page, the last two pages of this document, I took the routes-
Why am I on that page? We're not letting the public speak, but Mr. Clifford presented this document. Inconsistent. We're having a hearing, or not? We're having a discussion, or not? He's given us a document. At this point, it'd be up to Mr. Mayo and Mr. Lindbergh and all the staff to review it, and with Mr. Clifford to review this, and work on something together. Right now, we're getting basically a coincided response, a one-sided presentation, without anybody having the chance to question or talk about it.
I think two minutes ago, you asked for an explanation of what it was.
No, I, I, I don't-
Okay. Well, no explanation?
I want this to be discussed, I want this to be given to the superintendent, this Mr. Mayo, and have them have an opportunity to review it, and to at least give them a opportunity to review it and respond, if, again, depending on what we do later on tonight. I also like to have the public be able to weigh in on this too.
Well, that was the down, so-
Madam Chair, I understand there was a vote. I'm not bringing that up again. I'm not, I'm not asking reconsideration. Just stating my position. I respect the vote.
Okay, are you moving on?
We're still on, we're still on, ten, this is, this is-
I have some questions, Madam Chair, let me try to-
You have some questions for Mr. Clifford?
No.
On item 10.
This one's for us.
Yeah, we're on item 10.
Right. So the item that was presented, I have some questions on, that's all. Now, why would you-
Well, that's not just that was in our packet. There were many documents in our packet related to item 10.
Well, this is the only thing I received.
Well, this thing, there were, Jim, there were like eight documents in there.
Who's holding up?
Please? I'm holding up North Smithfield route times. This is the one that was prepared by somebody, sent to you. Yes, it wasn't just the document you're holding, and you need to-
I showed you the packet.
Oh, okay. Well, that's what I was talking about too, though. That's where I got my information.
Well, item 10 is specifically the bus contract issue. The memo in our packet was kind of-
Can I finish the last two pages of this and update everyone? Let the lookbook-
No objection, Mr. President.
Okay, so the last two pages are bus route. I took one route, I took bus number eight route, and I listed in this column the stop location heading, that's the new bus route. The bus routes that were on the website in December are the bus routes that we've been using, that have been on the website since September for parents to refer to, and then in December, they were updated to show the winter routes. So that's what everybody was using. The new routes given by Daco, provided that are now on the website, are slightly different. And what I put under the stop location, that's the new route that Daco now has posted for bus number eight. If you compare it to the old route, you'll see that some of these stops are no longer there, and the stop times are different. But I think the thing I want to point out here is, in the old route, the first pickup was at 3:30 at 700 Pound Hill Road, and the last pick, last drop-off was at 3:44. In the new route, the first pickup is on Pound Hill Road next door to 700, but it's at 3:32. But the new route doesn't complete its route until 3:56 at 1790 Pound Hill Road. Well, on the old route, 1790 Pound Hill Road, they were done by 3:40. So it's now taking 16 minutes longer, it appears, to do the same route with fewer stops.
Mike, are you leaving anything out there?
No.
This is, this is-
No, this is exactly as a cognitive-
They, excuse me, they go from, on the new routes, they show how they go from elementary to elementary school, they handle bus monitors, they drop off bus monitors.
No, Steve, I'm just looking at, I'm just looking at, if you look at just the first legitimate, you know, drop-off, was it, is now at 3:32 at the prior date here. So you are gonna, would you be on that one?
Can I interrupt, John?
Yeah.
Can I make a suggestion to the chair?
Sure, I say, Paul. It might be helpful, Mike has some issues with respect to the staff, staff times. Might be helpful to the committee before the next meeting, maybe if Mr. Raymond and Mr. Clifford could get together and they could compare the routes, and they might come up with a consensus or not about what they should and shouldn't be, and then they could both present that to the committee next time. If both of you gentlemen would be agreeable, then you could move on the issue.
Would you be willing to do that?
Sure. If you're gonna-
Okay.
Because that's what it takes. It takes a lot, it takes a lot of computer work to do these roles.
Well, I'd like to do this, right?
I understand, that's-
I'd like to go willy-
I agree.
Before we meet on March 15th.
Because I pulled, I just pulled route two off the new one, and I threw it down, and if I had the old one, I'd just put it next to it, and then we could compare it. It's not hard, it just takes a little bit of time.
That's a good idea, but if we're gonna do it, John, let's have Mr. Johnson from Daco, Jane Peppler and Bob Mayo, where they spent a tremendous amount of time. We had spoken formally about the idiosyncrasies that don't show up in the route, but I think you just can't do this with, what do you call it, Google Works?
We didn't do it with Google Works.
Did you drag the routes?
This, you don't do this with Google Works. I'm comparing the old route to the new route that was published on the website.
Okay.
I've got a document that said that you followed the routes.
So, question. What I'm trying to show is, Mr.-
I get it. I'll let you-
You wanna just give it to me?
So you're two or three to meet?
Yeah, we'll meet.
It's not, it's not hard, it's just time to team.
Thank you. Thank you.
And because today only have representative from Daco.
I think that's a must. I mean, it wastes, it wastes a lot of time if we don't, because-
Well, maybe they could meet privately, and then bring their questions to a joint meeting, which I imagine would be harder to put together than just the two of them getting together.
Yeah, why don't we, we'll meet, and we'll figure it together.
And then they can do it.
I'm talking likely, it's gonna, to do what I think they need to do, it's gonna take like one day, a Saturday.
It is.
Because you said you did it as well as-
Okay, well, you guys can work that out.
All right.
Thank you.
This is a date you like, you're not gonna get that down.
I know, I know.
Madam Chair, I just thought it would maybe save them a lot of time if they brought their concerns and questions to professional, professionals that did the routes, because there may be idiosyncrasies that are not aware.
Well, maybe if they work through it, and then they can bring their questions, they don't have to waste the days' time of the other three people that feel-
The other thing they're doing, Stephen, and I look at this, right, they have new route times, right? You had times in December, you have times now, you just lay the two next to each other, and you say, okay, here's the difference. And explain to me what's going on with those routes. Now, we could say, I'm gonna show up someday and just drag the route with the bus driver, and not tell you when, and then I'll show up, I'd say, okay, I'm ready to drive the route today, and then you would know exactly what the routes are. I mean, because that's what it comes down to, it's all about the times.
Okay.
You know, and I look along with you, but-
Thank you for agreeing to do that.
Yeah, it's not, I did a couple.
I still have some questions.
Did you look at this too, John?
I did.
Are you finished with your?
No, there's two, I think there's two errors on the sheet that they provided us, at least two errors.
Yeah, there's a couple of places that aren't right.
Well, why don't you, why don't you guys get together and figure out the errors?
Yeah, there's a couple of places that are not correct, Mike. I agree with you, I saw a couple that didn't have the right place compared to what Daco had.
If I could ask you one more question on the memo that we received. Mr. Lindbergh, the 18,422, is that? I'm not sure I understand what's being depicted here as far as, is that an overage, or is that?
So, thank you for asking a question regarding what was in your packet. I think the, what we reflected here, and, you know, Lisa, if I miss anything, you can jump in. The first, the first set out of column on the budget, it reflects what was budgeted, 718,170, and budgeted for over hours in total was $50,000. So the new columns to the right show that the routes are now coming in at four hours and 19 minutes average daily per route, and so that's, the over hours are reduced to $31,889. So basically, it's, it's a good credit of 18,422. And then at the bottom, I was asked by a couple school committee people to just project if it was a four-and-a-half-hour route, so.
So, I guess I'm trying to figure out, so the reason we have budgeted over hours, though, is because of last year's bills.
I think it was that. We had 50 grand last year of over hours.
Plus, we have a special ed busted-
Yeah, you take the credit, you give us the credit, it was 60 and 9.
And ESY that typically uses over hours, there's no way around that, because it changes dramatically, so.
So, so I guess that's where I'm not sure, I'm not sure where, so we know already, I think they're, in, in charging us erroneously for the start times, right, that depot time, that 15 minutes?
20, yeah.
20 minutes, right. So, what, the figure for that, that we've already agreed, and they've agreed to refund is what, 27,000?
I need to do the math.
Yeah, roughly. It was roughly 27,000.
Okay. So, is that correct, or that's changed to 31,889 in this?
In total, it's-
No, that's a full year number, that's not just what's all you have.
Okay, no, but that's, so, and they're doing that back to the start, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Of this year?
Of this year.
What about last year?
So what was the 27,000 credit for? I thought that was year to date.
That's, that's part of this 31, isn't it?
That's part, it's part of the 31.
So what dates, I guess what date start and what date end does that, that 31,000 represent?
Because of whole school year, 180 days, it's a projection.
So it does, it does go back to September?
Yes.
Okay, that's where I didn't know where it came from, okay.
Since we have the same contract, are they planning to address it for the previous year as well?
Yes, I made a request, but I felt like you wanted to get this settled first, and then however you want to proceed on last year, but that request was made of them. I have not heard from them. You had given me guidance that you would not want to, me to continue to have discussions with their CEOs, so I haven't, and so this is what you have in front of you for you all to decide where you want to go from here.
Okay, because I would imagine also it's got ramifications for the 95,000 that we budgeted for next year.
In a real positive way, yeah.
Okay.
But I, I think I'd like to point out, you know, there's, there's been a lot of back and forth over this, and I want to point out that this is, I mean, this is part of what I think we need to be keeping eyes on in this town. You know, that's, it's a lot of money that would not have come to light had the school committee not pursued it, so I just want to make that point, so.
Yeah, if we just take the 20-minute pre- and post-for last year, they'd know it's 32 grand.
Well, I guess that's my, you know-
Simple math, I mean, the math is real easy.
That's my point, is, is you're talking about doubling that, that 32,000.
Yeah.
If you go back a year.
Yeah, absolutely.
Because, you know-
That's a lot of money.
And going forward, it's actually closer to 20.
Another third, so you end up with 90 grand. Yeah, you end up with 90 grand of savings.
I think you just said it, what I thought I heard you say.
I don't know.
The 50,000 isn't budgeted just for extra hours. The 50,000 is budgeted for six, I think it's five or six things that can happen with busing, including the ESY bus, which is a big-
50,310 was just for regular education, over hours.
Overall, so last year, it included six things. This year, it's only, this month it was in there, was-
Split it all out.
You split it all out. So, is the money still in another line item for the ESY bus?
Yes, that's special education.
Yeah, they have to do it that way.
Okay, okay. Secondly, on this sheet that they, that we're just working off of-
Which one is that?
Well, when you come up with the four hours and 19 minutes of route time, and you're saying we're only gonna pay 31,889, that's based on 19 minutes a day per bus, right, in extra hours?
That's what it is.
But they didn't include bus 20, which they did include when they billed us for the extra hours of 11 hours a month. A big chunk of that, 11 hours, was the bus 20 route. So we're also gonna be paying 52 cents a day for bus 20.
That should be booked, though, to the special ed line, should it?
That's why it's-
But where's the savings for that?
No, I know, I'm with you.
Yeah, so Mr. Raymond, you're correct, it's not part of the regular ed, it's part Yeah, so, Mr. Raymond, you're correct. It's not part of the regular ed, it's part of, of savings that will be calculated out of special ed.
But the savings aren't showing up on the sheet you gave us.
This is just regular ed.
You just, you do the special ed, but I forgot that.
It's 13 buses, it's regular ed. Bus 20 is a special ed bus.
Yeah, we'll look at that, too. I, I, I just looked at the 13, because I knew that was the big issue, but I saw that piece, too. It had the same question.
Okay, Jim, you have some questions about this document?
Superintendent, just a couple of questions here. So, I guess, let's go to this No Smithfield Google document one. So, if we're looking at it, it seems that the 31,889, that'll be the total amount of the overage for the year. Is that correct?
Yes.
It's a little less than...
For general, for regular ed, basically, is that what you said?
Yeah.
So, if we go to, let me just see, if we were to go to the next page at the bottom, I know this is a rough guesstimate, had we done the four-and-a-half hours, we'd be at about $57,000. Is that correct?
Yeah, two school committees members asked if we were to project a four-and-a-half-hour route. As you, as you recall, Mr. Mayo said repeatedly, when we met in January 2014, we put out the bid specs that were between four and four-and-a-half hours. We had a pre-mandatory, a mandatory pre-bid meeting with bus contractors, who said, we can't bid on this. Mr. Mayo went back to first student, and the information he got were, was that they were closer to four hours. So, we resubmitted, and we had four-hour routes, route bids. So, what we did, and it's very simple, so it's not to offend anybody, but we took the cost of a four-hour bus route, the $306.91. So, we divided by eight to get a half-hour additional cost. So, so that, so for a four-and-a-half-hour route, it could be $345.28. That being said, it could be less, it could be more. So, for an extra half-hour, maybe the bus will run for $39 more for that half-hour. I don't know, but yes, the cost for a four-and-a-half-hour route, simple estimate, was 57,896 more than what you're paying now for your regular routes with 19 minutes of over hours.
Thank you, Superintendent. So, let me, let me just stay in my position. I mean, I, I think, at least at the last meeting, we were going to direct a solicitor to move forward, and if we want to wait till the next meeting, I understand that. But, I mean, in going, I, I'd like to put this issue to bed, and, and, you know, thank everybody for bringing it up. It's clearly a savings on, on the school side, but if we can flat feed this 31,889, assuming it's correct, and go forward with that, so we don't have any overages, and we can go back and get credits, and get credits here, I'd like to put this to bed.
Go forward, too.
We'll go forward with a flat fee. So, just to, I, I'm prepared to make a motion, but if the committee would rather hold off on it, I will respect that and wait till the next meeting.
I would like to hear what Jim, what John and Mike are going to give them the opportunity to meet, so they can... And you didn't finish, you, you started to say we were going to ask the solicitor to move forward.
To obtain an agreement subject to the committee's approval. I mean, I was gonna, I was prepared, and I'm not making it, to direct the solicitor to obtain an agreement subject to the committee's approval, consistent with this document, but I, since then, a discussion has taken place, to seek further credits for this year and last, and ask that to be a flat fee for the duration of the contract.
And then, I mean, just a regular bus route would be a flat fee rather than...
Plus, plus maybe this 32,000 calculated right in off the bat, and then we don't have to watch the bills, we don't have to, we don't have to, and again, that's assuming that number is correct, and I'm not saying it is. Then we don't have to watch the bills, we don't have to worry about the overage, and it seems that if, if the estimate of $57,000 is correct, we're ahead of the game.
I don't, I'm not following that, Jim, or I reading these numbers wrong. Isn't it gonna cost us more money if we go to a flat fee? Yeah, wait, let's hear the answer.
Please, I'm answering that. No.
Well, if we did it based on a four-and-a-half-hour rate, that's something we didn't ask...
Wait, wait, wait. I didn't ask for a four-and-a-half-hour rate. I said, take the 32,000, assuming it's correct, in a flat fee.
That's it.
Oh, okay.
Then we gotta go fast.
7,000.
No, 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 no. They take the 32 and say, if that's the real number, then use that forever. No, Stephen, they giving us an offer yet? They come back saying, this is what we think we owe you?
Uh, no, because the committee didn't want me to continue to, to discuss with the CEOs about an agreement, so we didn't have any of this, this is just...
They just give us an offer, you know, and say, we think we owe you a credit back.
Uh, it's, it's up to you. If you, if you want me to do that, I will simply ask them...
I'd like you and I to sit down and go over these routes and analyze how they did what they did, because it, it appears to me that they took the pre and post-bus time away, so the buses are leaving the depot later, but now the time is built into another part of the day, either the layover time between the elementary run and the secondary run, or by elongating some of the routes that previously used to take 20 minutes to drive, and now...
Yeah, the only one I looked at, Mike, when they, they start in the afternoon, they all leave at 1:50, which makes sense. And they gotta go two routes, think about 13 buses barreling down the street, you know. Just, you know, I, I understand, that, that's the only one that I had, when I looked at, is, okay, they're all leaving at 1:50 to get there for 2:10, which doesn't seem unreasonable, but we'll go over and figure out what the numbers are.
Yeah, I just want to sit down and go over them.
Yeah, that's the only thing I saw, when I looked at it.
But, I mean, you know, if we can get to a number, if it's give or take, and we can flat fee it going forward, we don't have to worry about it. Let's try to get an agreement. That would be just my statement.
Once we get the numbers, we'll just call them in, and then we'll discuss it, and we'll go ahead and something. I think that's the easiest way to do it.
And John, if you can do that, and call them in before the 15th, you probably would have a more effective discussion.
Yeah, absolutely. No, I, I don't know how quickly, how responsive they are.
Oh, they are.
Yeah, I, I think it's gonna take us some time, though, to do what we gotta do.
Yeah, I'll download all the routes. I'll get that going. Mike, so when we get there, I'll have all the current routes there, and if you have the old ones, I can plop one there.
Jim, I'm sorry. I was suggesting 57,000, and I'm saying, is he getting that right?
No, it's right there, it's right there at the bottom of the memo. It's, if we had gone, you, you can do a different projection, but if you had gone with a four-and-a-half-hour route, you wouldn't be paying 306, so we did simple math, but you can even take it down another 5% or 10%, the break-even point, in order to cover your costs for your regular route. I think, I left it upstairs, was around 13 or 14 dollars for an additional half-hour. I don't even think that would pay drivers. So, I guess you have to deduce your own conclusion that in the long run, it might have been better to pay the 19 minutes over versus the whole four-and-a-half-hour route. But I think you can get a quote from that, that can give you a price if you want.
No, I'm not debating the 57,000. I'm just, I thought Jim was advocating the 57,000.
Oh, no.
Sorry, I understood that.
He just wanted to know...
Yeah.
Is there any other discussion on that line item? Then we can go to Mr. Palmer's presentation, and we can use the turn of studio. Thank you very much for being here.
Thank you.
So nice to be here.
I'll see you also.
You taking care of my...
I'm gonna make a motion to the committee this next meeting, or...
Have a good night.
Madam Chair, Madam Chair, I think the motion that we continue this matter until, until we continue item 10 to our next regulation.